Okay. Got it. Okay, thanks for having me. I'm Jasmine Moore. I'm the Sustainability Director for Douglas County. And today I'm going to talk to you about our Climate Action Plan for Douglas County and the City of Lawrence. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay. All right. So today I'm going to talk about why we're developing a Climate Action Plan and how this is connected to other planning efforts within the county and the City of Lawrence. So first of all, in, I guess it was, yeah, late 2019, Douglas County and the City of Lawrence adopted Plan 2040, which is a comprehensive plan for unincorporated Douglas County and the City of Lawrence, which lays out a plan for the future, a vision for the future. And there are two things in there specifically that relate to the Climate Action Plan. One is that it calls for the adoption of a climate change adaptation and mitigation plan. And the second is to manage air quality in the community to limit excessive greenhouse gases and outdoor and indoor air pollution. So that was called for in the comprehensive plan. And so this is the next step in moving forward and getting more details about how to really address climate change in our community. We are not starting from scratch, though. So I want to emphasize that this is intended to build on the existing work that's been done in the community for decades, like Plan 2040, like our Food System Plan, and like many other plans that are related to environmental health and wellness in our community. It's also designed to dovetail with our Open Space Plan that Douglas County has been talking about for a few years. So the efforts and engagement that we'll be doing for the Climate Action Plan will be combined with the efforts that we're doing for Open Space. Those two initiatives really go hand in hand. And I'm excited that we're able to do them simultaneously. So the other thing that I wanted to mention is that this is part of a larger regional effort as well. So because of the leadership of Douglas County and the City of Lawrence over decades as it relates to environmental sustainability, we were invited to participate in the Kansas City Metro Climate Action Planning Effort for the Kansas City Metro Region. Now, usually that's a nine-county region. So when they were developing the idea for this plan, they knew of our work and they said it would be a loss if we didn't have Douglas County a part of this regional effort. And so they invited us to be a part of that process as well. So we were excited to be able to be a part of that process. And I'll talk a little more detail about that later. But the basics of it is that that larger regional plan is the high-level regional strategies. And the plan that we're talking about today in development is the locally specific aspects of our planning efforts. That regional plan is designed to both address greenhouse gas emissions as well as addressing our ability to adapt and bounce back from and forward from extreme weather events and hazards in our community. So the plan is going to focus on, our locally specific Climate Action Plan is going to focus on three elements, which are represented by our three icons here. The first is our environmental impact on the planet, specifically greenhouse gases and how we can reduce them. The second is extreme weather events and improving our ability to cope with and avoid harmful impacts from those extreme weather events. And also reduce our risk and vulnerability related to those extreme weather events. Really take stock of what changes are coming for our community and what changes do we need to make as local government and the broader community conversation around that. And then the third is community engagement. We really feel strongly that this plan will be successful if we have community buy-in and engagement and ownership of this plan. So we are spending a lot of effort on engagement. And that's another reason why I'm coming to you today in 2021 instead of 2020. Because this was planned to start in 2020. And as we were getting ready to launch it, we had a lot of things planned for engagement that we did not feel like would be successful just switching them all to virtual. Because we are prioritizing our frontline communities. And we weren't sure at the time how to do that in an equitable way. And so that in combination with all the other demands of the pandemic, we decided to step back, reevaluate, and figure out how to do equitable engagement for this planning process. So that leads us into our first priority here, which is equity. We know that the consequences of climate change are going to impact us all. However, there are going to be groups that are impacted differently than others. Our frontline communities are going to be hit first and worst. And the ability to recover from those events are not as strong as others in the community. And so this slide here shows a headline just from earlier this month. The EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, recently released a report that details all the different ways that climate change is going to impact the US. And specifically highlights how racial minorities are going to be hit the hardest, along with some other populations that I'll go into later. So we are going into this planning process with an equity framework. We're going to be asking all along the process, from engagement to design, to the development of the plan itself, how the communities most impacted by climate change are involved. And how we can meet those communities where they are to get their feedback. And how we can prioritize those communities when we think about investment and policy change to maximize our benefits. So next I'm going to talk through some of the data on climate hazards, resilience, and greenhouse gases in our area. And I first want to start by, with this groundwork of the Regional Climate Action Plan. This is where we're sourcing a lot of our data. Because this analysis was done, like I said, for the entire, an entire 10-county region. And so we're pulling a lot of resources from this report. This was adopted by the Mid-America Regional Council, which is the planning organization for the Kansas City Metro area in March of this year. And the link to the full plan is on there. And if people are interested in those details, we are using the data that they collected and the analysis that they did as a base for our locally specific plan. So the first thing, as it relates to our climate hazards, is to look at this hazard matrix. So this is a pretty simplified way to look at it. But it maps out the different extreme weather hazards and looks at them on the matrix of how likely is this to happen in our region? And how severe will the consequence be? So in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see three icons there. And they represent extreme flooding, drought, and extreme heat. Of those three, extreme flooding is at the very top of our list because we are already starting to see the consequences of that. And if you think back even a couple of years ago, 2019, that summer where we had all that flooding, it was shutting down roads for days. Those are the types of concerns that we expect more of in our future. This is that EPA report that I referenced earlier. It analyzes six different components of climate change and social vulnerability. For the purposes of our region, we're really looking at four. So one is air quality and health. The second is extreme temperature and health. The third is extreme temperature and labor impacts. And the fourth is inland flooding and property damage. So we know that, you know, our region is no stranger to any of these, any of these natural disasters. And understanding how they are projected to increase in severity is what we want to take a look at here. And then also how that we are looking at the immediate impacts of those disasters and the long-lasting impacts of those disasters. So these speak to some of those longer-lasting impacts. So air quality, it's looking at asthma and how specifically it relates to children and asthma hospitalizations. This report looked at four specific groups. And in terms of their social vulnerability, the first was those with low income. The second was people of color. The third was those without a high school diploma that are over 25. And the fourth was people 65 and older. So all of these different topics were analyzed with those groups in mind. And some of the major findings will not be surprising, especially because I know that you all have been talking about anti-poverty work for a while now. So those with low income or no high school diploma are about 25% more likely to live in areas with the highest projected losses of labor because of high temperatures due to climate change. Black people are 40% more likely to live in areas with the highest projected increase in mortality rates due to climate-driven changes in extreme temperatures. And black folks are 34% more likely to live in areas with the highest projected increases in childhood asthma due to climate change. So I know that you all have also been involved in our Community Health Plan and our Health Equity Report. And you're familiar with that. So these are not surprising numbers, especially in the context of the health inequities that we know these populations already experience. And so the context here that I want to elevate is that climate change will make all those things worse. And so another reason why it's so important for us to address this. Specifically in our region, they found that minority children are 77% more likely than non-minority children to live in areas with the highest projected increases in childhood asthma diagnoses directly from climate change. So there are some serious health implications as it relates to this work. And what we can expect and how to prepare for that is part of the work of this plan. To drive that home, I put together some headlines just from the last six months from our region and a little bit farther out that demonstrate the immediate and also those lingering effects from extreme weather conditions. So I'm not going to read these, but you'll see, you'll have a chance to digest these. So as you saw, you know, some of those were directly immediate effects of flooding or extreme heat. And others were the longer-lasting and lingering disasters that come along with those as well. So if you think about this last one, if your home is flooded and you don't have the capacity to, or if you're in a rental and your landlord doesn't make those improvements, you think about the mold and the other health issues that arise from those disasters. So that really drives home the point of, this is, these things are happening now. And the more that we can be prepared for these changes and be prepared to deal with the impacts of these changes, the better. So as we think about the communities that are impacted most by this, this is a map that shows our socioeconomic stress in our community and the region. And this drives home the point that we've seen over and over again with the health data. A lot of these maps look the same. The same communities that are experiencing inequities are colored the same on every map almost. So just driving home again that these are the same communities that are already experiencing stress. And so any added stress is really damaging. So as we think about, you know, all these impacts from climate change, we also need to think about, what can we do? What can we do to lessen the impact of climate change? And so one of those ways is to reduce, do our part to reduce emissions. And so this is a snapshot of our local emissions. This is specific to the City of Lawrence, but I think it's pretty fair to generalize this to Douglas County as well. This is from the latest data from our greenhouse gas inventory, which was done in 2017. And this is based on the targets that were set back in 2010 for reductions. Since then, we know that we need to go even deeper than this in terms of emissions reductions. But this demonstrates that we, as a community, are making progress. The carbon emissions are down 26% from that 2005 baseline. A good portion of that is due to our utilities changing their energy mix from coal to renewable options. Big opportunities there. And we saw the result of that in this latest, in this latest data point. This shows a profile of the greenhouse gas emissions for the larger Kansas City region. And if you take a look here, you will see that about two-thirds of our emissions come from using energy to heat and cool our buildings. And about a third of the emissions come from transportation. So as we think about our strategies and most impactful strategies to reduce emissions, those are where our biggest opportunities are. So as a part of the Kansas City Regional Climate Action Plan, part of the assessment that they did was looking at how to reduce carbon emissions by different action areas. And so the red bar shows, you know, our projections out to 2050, oops, that's a touchscreen, 2050, if we do business as usual. And then the blue bars show how much we can reduce our emissions in each of these categories, building energy efficiency, electricity generation, transportation, waste, and carbon sequestration. So you will see that we cannot get far enough by just reducing our emissions. We also have to think about how we can draw down those carbon emissions and sequester our carbon emissions. We in Douglas County have the benefit of having a lot of land. And we already know that our agriculture partners are getting approached about carbon credits and thinking about what carbon sequestration looks like. And there's an economic opportunity there for Douglas County and those who live in Douglas County. So as a part of the regional action strategy, they identified these different action areas. This is a good example of how this regional plan isn't always going to work out for our locally specific plan and why a locally specific plan is needed. So if you look at some of these categories, they look more specific to a city or urban environment, specifically like urban greening or transportation and land use. Some of the strategies within those categories may make sense for the City of Kansas City or City of Independence, but may not make sense for rural Douglas County. And so that's where our plan is going to look at what makes sense for our community and what can we do in these different areas. The three at top that are highlighted with arrows are done so because those are overarching strategies. Those are necessary in order to achieve the other action areas that are identified here. If we do not have collaboration and leadership at the highest levels of institutions in our community, it's going to be very difficult to make progress on any of these things. If we don't have innovation and creative financing to make progress on these things, it's going to be very difficult if we're not leveraging those funds. And if our community is not a part of the process and understand that we have community resilience, then what is it, what's the point? If our community is not benefiting from this and doesn't see their role in it. And so community resilience is one that we saw really showing up in the COVID pandemic, coming together and coming together for a common purpose. And that's the same type of energy that we need for our challenge of climate. So moving into our locally specific plan, here is our timeline for the development of the plan. So earlier this year, we have our data analysis and the adoption of the regional plan. Right now, we are just kicking off our public input and community conversation. That's why that big circle is there. In the wintertime, we will be digesting and reflecting and prioritizing all that feedback and massaging it into a plan that we can bring to you to adopt in the spring of 2022. And beyond that, starting in summer is when we will be mobilizing and implementing the plan. So my hope is that it will be adopted in time to influence the 2023 budget for both the city and the county. And also knowing that we want the whole community to have ownership of this plan. It's not just up to local governments to solve the climate crisis. Everybody plays a role. And so the implementation carries beyond just the two organizations that would be adopting the plan. So as I mentioned earlier, community engagement is an important part of our planning process. And I am going to talk about our engagement strategy for this plan. One of the things that we know about our climate challenge is that we really have all the information that we need to create change. It's not a matter of facts or technical solutions. It's really a matter of longing and having the will to imagine and implement something else. And so that's why we are prioritizing engagement with our community around this topic so that we can create those conversations all across the community. And they will see and create that longing for something else in a new direction. Another basis of our strategy is that small is good. And the big is often the reflection of small. And so we are cultivating small conversations around the community instead of having a big blowout event. We are trying to cultivate lots of small conversations across the community. One of the ways that we're doing that is through a partnership with two community partners. One is the Sunrise Project. And the second is the Climate and Energy Project. Those community partners are, we're working with them to hire 10 people from our community to go out and talk to their friends and neighbors and coworkers and family members about this topic and collect stories and better understand what that connection is, that personal connection to both climate in general, but also those extreme weather conditions. This is a model that has been used in our community before. We did it with our Food System Plan Development. The Health Department has used community coordinators and community liaisons before. And this is a way to really get deep engagement. And we prioritize hiring folks from those frontline communities that we talked about before. So I had the chance to meet them on Sunday as they were doing their training. And I'm so excited about the group that we have. We have high schoolers all the way up to retired folks that are engaged in this. And they've been through a couple of trainings so far. These are not them. This was just a placeholder photo. But I'm really energized by the experience that they're bringing to this process. And I think you're going to be really pleased with what results from this. We're really focusing on the storytelling aspect. And so by the end of the plan, hopefully we'll be able to see, you know, the stories that are collected translated into policy recommendations and really helping to shift the power to the communities that are impacted most. So those are our community coordinators. And they are, like I said, they just finished their training. They are going out and talking to the community like right now. So excited about that. We also have just a broad opportunity for people to get engaged. We have our first community survey that is out and live on our website right now. Where we, this is an opportunity for anybody who's interested to participate. And this, like I said, this is just the first one. I think there's 12 questions. We're also collecting demographic information so we can see who is participating and where they're participating and see, you know, who's missing from the survey. The other thing that we are experimenting with is doing a model based on a citizen scientist model where we're asking folks in the community to provide data about, it may be like, if there's a flood in the next few months, we may send out a request for people to map where in their community they're standing water at the moment. And so we're experimenting with some things like that to collect some real-time data and real-time input from community members. And we'll see how it goes. Another way that we're engaging with folks is inviting people to participate as climate ambassadors. And this is designed for folks in our community that have a willingness to talk to other people about climate and have conversations. And then give us some feedback about how those conversations went and what you talked about so that that can inform the plan as well. We have a lot of different options for what this climate ambassador can look like. Some of them are virtual, some of them are in person, some of them are just like texting your friends a question and getting some responses. So that's another piece that I'm excited about, sharing some of the work with the community and then getting some of that feedback to come back into the plan. And anybody can be a climate ambassador. So there's a place on our webpage right now to sign up. And we'll be sending that information out soon with all the different opportunities. It's like a menu of options you can choose to be a climate ambassador. One of them is Photo Vote Voice Project. So you can organize a group of friends to go out and take pictures of places that you really care about and you're worried about losing in the community and organizing conversations about that. So we know that we don't have to wait until the plan is adapted to take action. There are things that we can do and we are doing right now. There are things that community members can do right now. And so one of the ways that I, this is one of the activities that we'll share with the community as well is to identify what is the most impactful way that you can participate in this effort or in climate in general. And we do that by looking at this Venn diagram and identifying what brings you joy? What are you good at? And what's the work that needs to be done as it relates to climate? So that is not going to look the same for most anybody. It could be that someone is really good at finance and spreadsheets. And what brings them joy is looking through budgets. And so thinking about how that applies to climate work, there's a space in that middle, in that middle that that person is uniquely suited to fit. And so we are trying to identify and have conversations about how everybody can find their space in this plan because it is something that relates to everyone. But it's not always obvious what that relation is. I know we had some conversations with some folks at an event last week where it was someone who was very passionate about environmental sustainability. But when they were asked a question like, how does climate relate to you? They couldn't quite answer that. And so this is intended to help everybody find that story for themselves. And for me, that story revolves around these two, which are my two boys. And, you know, sustainability is all about the future. Climate work is all about the future. And they are my future. So I always like to So I always like to end with that. And that is what brings me my joy and keeps me inspired to do this work. So I'm going to end there and see if there is time for discussion or questions.
Thank you, Jasmine. I really appreciate the presentation. I am particularly grateful for kind of the focus around racial equity and focusing on frontline communities and recognizing that there are differential impacts of this, particularly as we talk about resiliency in communities, kind of which communities we're calling on to be more resilient more often and what that means. And so I appreciated you tying it to a number of other priorities and goals for our community. One piece that I didn't hear a lot about was around affordable housing and energy justice. And I'm wondering how you see the conversation around sustainability, particularly as we see kind of increasing utility rates. And this is where we know that energy justice becomes really important and intersects with the affordable housing conversation. How has that kind of come up in these discussions?
Yeah, that's definitely a topic that is connected. And the Kansas City Regional Plan addresses some of that already. And so we know that that's going to be a base for the conversations that we'll be having. It hasn't been as top of, top of mind when it comes to sustainability here. But I don't see why, why not? We know that our energy costs and utility costs are often a really high percentage of housing costs. And one of the things that we've talked about is thinking about how we define affordable housing. And if we can wrap in the cost of utilities in that, then how does that shift the, the definition of what is affordable housing? Another challenge is in Lawrence specifically, the rental population is so high that that's another challenge is, you know, if you don't own the space, then how does it make sense to make investments in energy efficiency? So I think there, that's a conversation that's ripe to happen, especially in the context of affordable housing. And so I'm looking forward to, I think that's where we'll hear a lot of stories about that specific connection.
Commissioner Reed, thanks Jasmine. That was great and lots to chew on. And I'm really excited about the community, the focus on community engagement. To piggyback off Commissioner Portillo's question and your comments a little bit, I, I was thinking about things like, well, you know, we have such a huge rental population in Lawrence especially. And there's been recent conversations in the city of Lawrence about updating code enforcement. And I'm curious if, and I'm saying this from a little bit of a place of ignorance, like I'm not going to pretend to know city of Lawrence codes and the, or the, where the best overlap is to kind of identify places, opportunities for code enforcement and weatherization type of things or life safety issues that might help mitigate the increase in those disasters. So I was thinking about that while you were talking earlier and just wondering if, if that's ever been a part of the conversation. It's especially because there's such a high rental population and so many rental licenses in this community. And I was, that made me think about weatherization programs. And I know that there's some of that, but they're, they're not always the easiest to access. Or some of those conversations have sort of been had around in a roundabout way so far, I think, at Affordable Housing Advisory Board, but I mean, they're complex, but I do, it's high impact. I mean, people and, and less access and less incentive to, well, not even a sense of, you're not really empowered if you're a renter to be able to do any of that. And so then it's completely dependent on a relationship with the property owner or what potential policy or codes might be in place.
I think that's a really important point. That has come up at the city of Lawrence Sustainability Advisory Board meeting. And that group is working with staff for the city of Lawrence on the revamp of the weatherization program. So there, the city already identified that that was a need. And they were in the process of trying to find somebody to hire for, to fill that weatherization staffing position. And part of the function of that job would be to look again and revamp the program specifically with energy efficiency in mind and some of the other issues that you talked about. And then there was one other thing, oh, the rental inspection piece. That's another area where other communities, there are some in Colorado, Boulder is one that has energy efficiency as a part of their rental inspection program. And so they're doing energy audits as a part of that inspection program. So there's a lot of opportunity there for sure. And that could be something that the city looks at as they, I believe that rental inspections is one of the things that's on their agenda to look at again. And so that could be an important part of that redevelopment of that program.
So then to piggyback off that, I have a thought and maybe it's a question directed at Sarah and Jill a little bit too, like, I mean, obviously we're different, different entity than a city. And, and rental licenses aren't a thing for the county and, and codes are obviously different. I have been curious though about, I, and I haven't done any personal research, like if there are any state programs or models for weatherization that's sort of targeted toward, or, or opportunities to get access or support for weatherization efforts in rural homes for folks that are not living inside municipalities that have a tendency to have those. So I don't know if anybody has any response to that, but that's a thought that's been bumping around in my head and is kind of, and is relevant now. I'm thinking about mitigation. I hear you talking about the extreme climate. I mean, the extreme weather events, especially like the, the preparedness is what we're after. And so how do we empower folks with individual opportunities to prepare their spaces as much as possible?
And I was just going to add that I can do some more research on that.
Yeah, I think that I don't, can't think of anything off the top of my mind that comes to mind for rural weather, where this, oh, rural weatherization, but I, yeah, that'd be some great research, Jasmine.
Other than those updated floodplain maps, right? And so we can help people identify if they're in high risk places.
Yes, nice job on this report. I really, I really am thankful for how much time you've thought about the engagement strategies. It sounds like you're using some past practice that really worked well, but it also seems like you're trying some new things, which I'm really excited about. And that's great. Mine isn't so much a question, but just something for your group to think about. And I really hope as you develop the plan, you'll think about policy implement implications and what maybe we can be thinking about, not only from a county operations standpoint, but also are there ways we can speed up or incentivize this work? I listened to a really interesting podcast from the weekend that connected really well with how hard it is to address climate change with the social pressures that happen even within families. And I think we're going to have to do quite a bit to help change attitudes when it comes to climate change in order to make the difference that we really have the aspiration to make and that there are social implications that I think we're overcoming that will be a challenge. So anything in policy, I'd really be interested in what, what you come up with.
Thanks, Commissioner Kelly. I, just to add on to that, we know that climate change can be a divisive topic in, in some, in some circles. But we also know that extreme weather is something that everybody identifies with because you can see it and see how it impacts you. And so we realize that in some communities, we, it will not be effective to lead with climate change as, as our, our lead topic, talking point. And it may be more about, and some of this is reflected on our survey too, you know, what are the environmental priorities in your community? Or if, do you feel like you're prepared if there were to be a major flooding event today? And so ways to personalize it, take it away from the big ambiguous challenge of climate change and try to bring it down to, this is the, the personal impact is something that we're conscious of. And we don't, our goal is not to change people's minds about climate change because that, as you mentioned, that is a very difficult thing to do. So we are more concerned about having conversations about, we're going to see more extreme weather. So how can we be prepared for that?
I did have another question. I was really excited to hear about some of those community coordinators. Is that what their role is called, right? Being put in place at Sunrise and heard about that and the plans for it. So it's exciting for me to see how like energized and jazzed you were when you mentioned that, having meeting, having met them. How long do you expect those folks to be in that position and doing that work? And, and also are you just kind of analyzing it and digesting it on an ongoing basis? Or is the goal to, to cumulatively do something with what they gather in a year's time or however long?
Yeah. So our schedule or our original contract with them was through the end of this year. But we are adapting and being flexible. So, so we are going to push that out a few months at least. The goal is for those community coordinators to be involved in the whole process so that they can see how the work that they are doing actually turns into policy and recommendation. So the intent is that they will be on board through the plan adoption in some capacity. The majority of their work is going to happen this fall and winter. But we want to invite them to continue on to be a part of that process. And in fact, we, I just had a conversation with our community partners today about doing a workshop with them specifically to talk about how to translate a story into policy and what that looks like so that they can keep that in mind throughout the process and, and add that value. Another added benefit of the community coordinator's position is that they also get exposure to how local government works. And so we're also creating civically engaged folks in our community. And hopefully they will use that to leverage into other opportunities to, to get engaged in, in our, in our work collectively. So, so that was a longer answer, but yeah.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate the update.
Thank you.
And if we have nothing else for our work session, we'll be in recess until our business meeting at 5:30. Thanks.